I'd call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please, uh, do your thing?
In accordance with the South Carolina Code of laws, nineteen seventy six, section thirty dash four dash A and D, as amended in notification of the meeting and the meeting adjourned to pay the votes for at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting on the county council. As a building at a publicly accessible place on the county website and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will do the pledge and Mr. Goey will do the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time to gather together. Father, grant us wisdom tonight as we go into decisions on behalf of Jasper County. We also pray special blessings for our newest member, Gene, that he can, uh, work with the council and move forward with us as we go into new business. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Uh, next is the swearing in ceremony, uh, with Gene, our new council person, and the mayor of Hardyville. I know you're here someplace. Oh, there you are.
I, State Unit, I'm Gene Jipperly, who solemnly swear that, exonerally swear that I am duly qualified, I am duly qualified according to the-
According to the constitution of this state.
According to the constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of office.
To exercise the duties of office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And then I will.
And then I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
Defend the constitution.
Of this state and of the United States.
Of this state and of the United States.
So help me God.
Thank you all for coming.
Can I say a few words?
Uh, no, I just actually thank you to Harry Williams. Uh, it was kind of funny how, I don't know if funny is the right word, but he actually was, I introduced myself to Harry about seven years ago in this very room, in this council chamber, where we both had some issues with the county and how it was handling the fire service. So it's like going around in full circle at this point in my life, but I, in a million years, I would never think I'd be up here at this part of the, on this part of the podium, uh, this part of the, uh, day or so. But thank you to all the voters that voted me in and, uh, I'll work hard and I'll do the best for the county. Thank you so much, though, for being here.
Uh, the approval of the agenda is discussion. I do have a discussion. Uh, we're gonna be moving the executive session to five A. Remove item two of the executive session. Defer seven, seventeen, item seven, seventeen, and eighteen. And there will be a special elect-, uh, special meeting on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at ten AM to have the two executive session items discussed. Do I have a motion with that amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with those amendments stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will recuse myself from this executive session. Now it's all yours.
All right.
Just go ahead.
Let's make, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Uh, Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Any nays? Nope. We will move to go into executive session. Can I get a motion to come out of the executive session?
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Are there any decisions coming out of the executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a res- uh, resolution to appoint Lawrence Flynn as interim attorney not to exceed ninety days.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I will turn back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, I just want to read all this. Approve the agenda, approve, we didn't, uh, like to have a motion. Uh, a discussion on the mi- approval of minutes of four twenty-one. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend the motion, uh, minutes of four twenty-one? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of four twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing no comments. All those in favor, raise your right hand and vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, hearing none, motion is approved. No, uh, we had a, uh, the, in the, the news or whatever, Facebook and all that, there was things about the Ticton Hall and the Fire District and all that. Uh, we have never made decisions, it's never been brought before us, and just to make sure of that. So when everybody hears that we've, are in discussions, as a council, we have not been in those discussions. So, is there anybody else who'd like to add to that? Thank you very much. Open floor, citizens' comments. We've got protocols for public comment. Thirty minutes are allocated for public comment and each speaker is allotted three minutes. Speakers may not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking time to another person. Speakers may sign in on an agenda list maintained by the clerk of the council prior to each meeting and include their name, address, and include the subject and purpose for which they seek to address counsel. All public comments may be directed to county council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Speakers shall find their comments under the jurisdiction of the county and shall not use public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, or candidates for public office. Counsel does not take action based on public comment at the meeting, as counsel does not take action on items not on the agenda. The chairman may direct the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. All speakers shall be mindful and respectful of those participating in or present at the meeting. Speakers are to be civil in their language and shall refrain from comment or behavior that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene language, or disruptive actions. Henry Nettles. Mr. Nettles.
Yes, sir. My name's Henry Nettles. Level three twenty-four, Jim Nettles Lynn. I've been up there before and asked y'all to take over that road. It was in the county and about fifteen years ago. I blame it on a friend of mine had it took out the system. It's out the system right now, but it needs to be put back in. Since that road was, I asked the road to be closed about twenty-five years ago. Since then, we got two families moved out there. It's got handicapped people. If something was to happen out there, it's gonna be on the county's hands. And, uh, I gave Mr. Chris Evans these petitions and showed him some of the what terrain that is last week. Right now, that's all I got to say, but I would, Mr. Rudy Smith, come if you had it on my behalf. And I'd like to, my time, over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Nettles.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Heidi, no, gotta do the next one. Next one on the list is Heidi Fraser of Cusahatchee.
Good evening, Chairman Kemp and county council members. My name is Hetty Fraser from Cusahatchee, and I'm here concerning the Cusahatchee Elementary School, which was a historical school that was built in nineteen fifty-seven, and it was later changed to Cusahatchee Community Center. Unfortunately, in two thousand twenty-three, our community center was torn down without our knowledge, and we've been here several times and you have agreed, the previous council has agreed, to rebuild the school back, the community center back. And we've also, um, completed the floor plans, but we have not had any more further contact with the council since our representative or contact person, Mr. Lucas, is no longer here. And we are requesting that we have another contact person and that we also would like to be included in the two thousand twenty-six budget so that we can get our school, community center rebuilt. So we'd like to work together to get this done because our community center really worked with the, the co- with the community because it housed, um, fo- um, Head Start, it had four classes there. It also had a senior citizen, um, met there, and also it, um, had other activities where people could rent the gym and have different functions like family reunions and birthday parties and workshops. Because that's one of the places where I learned how to crochet, was when they gave workshops during the summertime. So with all, without any more delay, please make sure that you put us on that budget and that you contact us because we want to make sure that our community center is rebuilt because we miss it and we need it for the children of Jasper County. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudy Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other council members. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Henry asked me to come in here and tell you about his road. But before I tell you about that road, I'd like to tell you something about myself. I was the public works director for Jasper County for twenty-something years. I retired, I think it was oh-five. When I first came to the county, for several years, we worked that road on a regular scheduled basis. For some reason, Henry wanted to close that road. He came before the council, requesting permission to close it. The council denied that permission. Sometime later, Henry said that the chairman of the council gave him permission to block the road. Henry barricaded the road. When he did, we kept, we quit working the road. But the road was in the system for several years while I was with the county.
Thank you very much. Paul Nettles. Paul Nettles.
Um, Peter.
That ends public comment. Mr. Fogrum, would you, uh, meet with Ms. Fraser?
Yes, sir.
And give a new contact point?
Uh, Mr. Vividson and I will meet with her, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Number seven has been taken off the agenda. Number eight, Andrew Fogrum. Consideration of Resolution two oh two-five dash four-nine to authorize the Jasper County Administrator to execute a surrender of premises, equipment use, transfer and transition agreement with the first amend- uh, addendum by and between Jasper County, Jasper County Sheriff and Jasper Animal Rescue Mission regarding animal services and related matters. Mr. Fogrum.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. You've had the opportunity to read the resolution. You know, we've been working on this for some time. Um, this comes after you have entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Beaufort County to help with the animal shelter issue. Councilmember Van Geeson has been instrumental in this and been part of that. I'm sure he might want to make some comments as well. Uh, Mr. Keith Hughes, the president of JARM, is in the back of the room. He has been, uh, cooperative and helpful with, uh, the drafting of this agreement and reviewing it. And, uh, our sheriff, Mr. Chris Malfris, is in the corner over there. He's also a party to this agreement. Uh, this agreement follows the IGA and the, uh, the tremendous support we've had from these people and other nonprofits, um, in Beaufort County in trying to rectify the situation and improve the situation at the animal shelter. All of these folks have done a great part in doing that, and this, uh, is a separation agreement uh, that, uh, separates the county from JARM and its, uh, current, uh, arrangement that it had in previous years with a lease operation for the animal shelter. And it identifies the terms associated with that. Uh, in that, uh, there are some monetary amounts that are, um, in here for providing some compensation to JARM for, uh, a month of service, um, that they provided, uh, staffing and so forth of the shelter this year. And also, uh, a list of, two lists, one of equipment and supplies that they are donating to the county, acknowledging that, and also a list of items that they have purchased and, uh, wish to be compensated for as part of the separation. And that is included in here, too. I have those two numbers for you. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about resolution and how this is going to work. But I thought it, it might also be helpful if I just gave you a quick update about where we are with the animal shelter and how this all plays in it. The transition, uh, notice for JARM, uh, we started this, uh, transition to be effective on August, uh, August the first. On July the twenty-eighth, it was reported that the shelter had about eighty dogs. Uh, when, uh, everyone, uh, amassed on the situation August the first, they were down to forty-five dogs. That means that Jasper Animal Rescue Mission, JARM, did a Herculean effort of trying to, uh, clean, uh, out the shelter for the transition. It's an amazing accomplishment on behalf of JARM and the partners that worked with them. Uh, Beaufort County staff, JARM staff, Hilton Head Humane, and a large group of volunteers began assessing animals and documenting conditions and needs at that time. By Tuesday, August the fifth, all adoptable cats were transferred off-site and accepted by another nonprofit for care and adoption. All dogs which required medical care were transferred to Hilton Head Humane for treatment. A large number of adoptable dogs were transferred to Beaufort County for processing, many of which were then transferred to other agencies for adoption after being medically cleared by Hilton Head Humane. As of August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, there are fourteen dogs remaining at the Jasper Animal Shelter. And no adoptable cats. There are a number of feral cats surrounding the premises that are being trapped and neutered and released. The Jasper Shelter is, uh, closed to intake and owner-trapped, neutered, released. The Jasper Shelter is closed to intake, uh, for, and owner surrenders. The Jasper County Sheriff's Animal Control Officers are picking up strays and holding them for the required five days in Jasper County prior to transferring them to intake at Beaufort County. Uh, this average is about five to seven animals a day. The Jasper Shelter condition was also assessed. The assessment of shelter, of the shelter's need was communicated to Jasper County Administration. Uh, we responded by sending Jasper County Public Works Maintenance Staff to assist as needed to meet the great physical needs of the shelter. Beaufort County and Jasper County staff reached out to partners to ask for help. Jasper County brought in a large roll-off dumpster, uh, for recycled materials. The container was full in a few days. A lot of work by a lot of different individuals. An animal trainer and animal behavioralist came in to assist with evaluation of animals. Staff worked with DEHEC to properly dispose of and transfer custody of acceptable medications and move them to secure medical supply storage at Beaufort County Shelter. The director of Hilton Head Humane solicited help from Hilton Head Landscapes. They have agreed to supply labor and materials. They've done some work out there, so we have some private contractors donating their time to do some work out there. I know Mr. Van Geeson was involved in that. Appreciative of that. So we are making progress and, uh, will be coming to you as we work through the IGA with Beaufort County for the next phase of where we think we are in, uh, in operating the shelter going forward. So that's a quick, uh, sum and summary of, uh, of the activity of late as provided by, uh, uh, Beaufort County, who is reporting on the IGA to their council as to what they're doing and how things are progressing. Uh, they have, uh, also invoiced us for the first leg of services, and we received that, asked Ms. Burgess to process that today. So that concludes all of the update for you that I have, uh, but we do have, as I said, Mr. Hughes and Sheriff Malfris in the audience, if you have any other questions. But ultimately, the resolution, um, has the exhibits that I mentioned, the lists in it, and the resolution, um, calls for the surrender of the premises and the conditions associated with that. The county has reclaimed the utilities back in the county's name, working through all that process. And uh, the exhibits total, uh, forty-two thousand two hundred dollars would be what the county, uh, would spend to compensate JARM for the items that they are selling to the county. Uh, also proposes twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the operational portion, so that's seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. There is also in the narrative a, uh, a number that was placed in there, assuming that we may have some issues with the software, um, conversion, which was another twelve thousand dollars, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Chief Wells has actually been working on that. I think that's gonna be much, much less than that, so. Those, uh, are the numbers that we're talking about, ultimately asking for the council's consideration to, uh, adopt the resolution so that we can memorialize the surrender of the premises, but I'm happy, uh, to answer any questions that you may have.
Gene?
Uh, can I defer to the la- hey, can I go last, actually, or?
Mr. Zillo. We're gonna use Mr. Van Geeson last. Ralph?
Um, we did get an email from one of our constituents in regards to this. Um, as far as the reimbursement of, or purchasing things or reimbursement back, were any of those items, um, previously purchased by the county that we essentially could be funding again? Or did we do an audit to make sure that those items are free and clear, that?
Uh, yes, sir, not that I'm aware of, and we have Mr. Hughes. Mr. Hughes, could you speak to that, please? The president of JARM, um, can, can talk about those items and how they came to own them.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So I have reviewed the items and their associated costs.
So, I have reviewed the items and their associated cost, and they are correct to the best of my knowledge. In keeping with full transparency, all items were purchased by JARM during my tenure to fix up and repair the deplorable condition of the facility when we took over. All the monies that Jasper County provided for this contract was used to offset payroll. Remember that this facility takes in approximately eighteen hundred animals a year, and it must be manned seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Traditionally, Jasper County, based on my research, only provided on average about a hundred and fifty thousand per year prior to my tenure. Last fiscal year, I asked for, justified, and then received an additional hundred and fifty thousand to offset payroll costs while we took on this new endeavor. The three hundred and forty thousand dollars that we received last year only covered about seventy-five percent of our actual payroll, payroll costs for the last fiscal year. All these items were purchased from donor dollars for JARM, not for Jasper County. They are listed as assets and as such must be donated or sold to another 501(c)(3) or a government entity. Since we, JARM, can no longer benefit from their use and the Jasper County Animal Shelter needs them, and they are all less than one year old, we believe it is only fair to sell them to Jasper County at our cost with no markup or labor costs associated with them. Last thing I want to say is that three hundred and forty thousand dollars is only a small portion of the money that it takes to operate a shelter that has this intake rate of eighteen hundred animals per year. In fact, that is only about thirty percent of the money that it actually takes, meaning that the other seventy percent of the money comes from gracious donors that believe in the cause. These donors are the true heroes because without them, none of this would be possible.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
The items, I mean, what kind, what are the largest items on this list to ask, to reimburse them?
Kennels, mostly.
What's gonna happen to those kennels now?
Uh, well, my, I mean, we, we bought the kennels because we need them. Because the kennels that were there were built, I'm, I'm assuming, nineteen ninety-six. So, they're thirty years old at this point, and they needed to be replaced. So, we, we had no choice but to replace them with new kennels.
Are there any other large items besides kennels?
The only other one is the, the Conex box that's out there for storage that was purchased.
And as such, could that be donated to a 401(c) such as a Beaufort County? You know, so that if they're gonna be taking over this project, and I'm not sure that they are, could it be transferred that way or? Because I don't know where this money's going at this point.
I'm sorry.
I don't know where this money is gonna go now. Who, who's gonna receive the money?
Uh, it would be JARM.
Right.
Who purchased the items.
Right.
And you would then have the items and the ultimate disposition of how you provide the animal shelter and animal control function, I think is yet to be determined. We're still working our way through that. But you would own the assets and you could use them as we see fit, whether that's all developed or whether we can continue negotiations with Beaufort County to see if they may provide those functions for us.
I'm still not past Lewis' question, you know, where did the money come to buy it? And where does it go?
We are budgeting the three hundred and forty thousand dollars that we would normally be paying JARM to pay for the services through Beaufort County, and we're proposing to use the same money to pay for this to effectuate the change of the tenant leasing your building, I mean, leaving your building, which they previously leased.
Gene?
Yeah, um, were there any other kennels donated to JARM or were they all purchased by JARM?
They were purchased by JARM.
Okay, so no, nothing was donated then, uh, in terms of?
The money was donated.
Oh, okay. So, you used the money to just purchase the kennels and it's?
Correct, and, and typically that, the facility was what we were leasing. So, along with the facility comes the kennels.
Yeah, I was just curious as to why, you know, if you got the money donated for the kennels and then they'd be sold back to the county for whatever the price is that you're selling them for, that?
Well, we're selling them at cost and?
But the cost was just what you got as a donation, though. I mean, the monies that were provided to you were used to pay for the kennels?
Correct.
And now you're selling them to the county? I'm just trying to see how that kinda?
Well, we're not selling them to the county in so much as we would have taken them with us and used them elsewhere. But the best thing to do is the county needs them, but we would have bought them if the county didn't need them at that facility. So, it's completely up to the council as to what they want to do with the kennels.
Yeah. Uh, the other question I had, what's, I don't really know. This was supposed to be turned over on August first. Is everything completed with that process? If that's how it was reading in our resolution to have everything completed by August first? Then my question is, what happens to your employees after this whole, if this Beaufort County joint operation happens with Jasper County? What happens to the JARM employees after that?
I think not all of it was completed August one, but that was our target date. And I think all of the steps that are enumerated in the resolution have been completed. I may be wrong, but I believe they've all been completed. As for the employees, I believe there are six employees that were former JARM employees that are being paid now, and they're being paid, I failed to mention, from the Community Foundation of the Low Country. They are paying their salaries for thirty days while we go through this transition. So, they do have staff there. You're not paying for them. Beaufort County's not paying for them. The Community Foundation is paying for them for thirty days.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Van Geeson. Thank you very much, by the way.
Well, we'll see when this all gets over with. First of all, Keith, thank you so much for all you've done for our county. And I mean that, I know you and I speak quite often together. And, you know, there's a lot of things with the kennel. There's concrete slabs there that you guys obviously poured. I don't think that, you charged us for those, right?
We, we didn't pour them.
You didn't? Those were there? And you guys added on it?
I, in my tenure, I did not pour any concrete there.
Okay. But anyway, it's gone, you know, pretty well. There's obviously some bumps in the road. And the thing was, for me, you know, we need to do a press release and tell everybody how this came about. But the main thing was, we're, we were given, you know, three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year basically to JARM. And while we're doing that, they're, they're being supplemented by donations to pay all the bills. While I'm getting calls every five minutes from the other animal rescues in the area asking me, well, they're getting money, why aren't we getting money? So, at, at the point where they're in overflow, animals are going to Beaufort County, they're going to all the other rescues, I just thought it was best, uh, that the county have their own shelter. And a new facility, the facility that we have now will be in interim, and then I think it'll be a holding spot in the future. But it was, it's, it's time for us to take control of, of, you know, the destiny of all these animals. And, you know, we've got to get a spade neuter program in place. There's a lot of things we, we need to do and put in place, which we are working on. But it's an epidemic issue we have here. I mean, you can go on Jasper County Ask and Answer, and you'll see every day, there's puppies on this road, there's a dog found over here. And we've got to get our ordinances right, which I'm working on. It's something else we're working on, is get the ordinances and, and there'll be some pretty stiff fines for some things. Dog, dog fighting, stuff, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough for the folks out there. And we need to make it tough. So, you know, it's, this has been a tough transition. It's been tough for, for Mr. Hughes because he's put so much time and effort into it. For that, I do feel badly that I kinda came in like a bullet at a china store. But I just thought it was right. It's the right thing by the animals and by the taxpayers that we be responsible, we do the right thing by them. We had an opportunity to join with, with Beaufort County and them helping us out. Beaufort County's not picking up the tab, Jasper County is. They're invoicing us for the time that they've spent and for anything that they've done. But we've got a lot of stuff. It's like Tallulah, who is the director over Beaufort County. She took two weeks vacation to come over here and work for us for free. You know, that's a big deal. But a lot of people sacrifice some things and, and we're gonna get it right. So, I do want to thank everybody that has donated their time, effort, materials for the things we've done there in the last few days. There's still gonna be some ongoing things. Mr. Hughes and I, I've given him my word that I would stay in contact with him, and he's willing to help us out in the future. And I want to keep it that way. So, that's about all I got to say about it. I want to thank everybody for everything they've done for us, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Zillo? Everybody is. Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes. I appreciate it. You're always appreciated. The animals appreciate you. Do we have any further discussion? I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Any comment?
I would, I'd like to see in this where it is spelled out to make sure that, again, we had some concerns through our constituents, to make sure that if passed, we have an itemized list of what is there.
So, what, what would you, want to postpone it or what do you want to do?
Should we table it?
We already have a motion to approve or disapprove. Or amend.
Can I converse it?
Mr. Chairman, I am open to amending my second.
Okay. Somebody make a motion.
I'm making a motion.
You didn't second it, so?
I'll, I'll second.
This is getting confusing. It's always, no, wait, it's, you're, you're only a second. It's Mr. Van Geeson. How long would it take us to, what?
I think we have a list of everything, right? Do we just have to put together for everybody?
We do. We have lists as exhibits in the document, so?
Can we wait till the twenty-fifth because we'll have a meeting?
Absolutely. You want to defer it until the twenty-fifth? We can do that.
I'll make a motion to defer it to the twenty-fifth. Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing no comment, all those in favor say aye and raise their free hand. Aye.
Aye.
All against, hearing none, the motion has passed. Put it on the twenty-fifth. Ms. Burgess, consideration of Resolution R dash two oh two five dash fifty, Resolution of Jasper County Council to approve consideration and approval of the purchase of a eight-point five foot by twenty-eight foot cargo trailer from Lee Transport Equipment under South Carolina Contract four four oh oh three one dash, excuse me, two nine six, as provided by Section two dash four four five, use of state contracts of the Jasper County Purchasing and Contracting Ordinance. Ms. Burgess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. As you stated, this is a resolution to purchase a cargo trailer to be used as a mobile command center by the sheriff. The sheriff began, the sheriff department began this process in March, seeking a, a cargo trailer that would be sufficient. They were able to find a vendor, Lee Transport Equipment, who has a state contract.
Mr., Ms. Nettles, please. We're in a, we're in a meeting? Thank you.
And our procurement, our purchasing and contracting ordinance provides that the county may use state contracts, and there are certain provisions that follows that the chief purchasing officer may, independent of the requirements of bid process of this article, procure supplies, services, or construction items through the contract established by the purchasing division of the state of South Carolina as provided for in South Carolina Code, Section eleven dash thirty-five dash ten. And as the chief purchasing officer, I have determined that Lee Transport Equipment has a contract. I confirmed that with the state of South Carolina, with the purchasing division, and that after reviewing the other two proposals, that Lee Transport Equipment was actually the lowest bid as well. And therefore, there are, and also there are sufficient funds in the current fiscal twenty twenty-six Sheriff Department budget, particularly in the capital outlay line item, which is oh one oh dash oh fifty-seven dash thirty-seven fifty-two, for the purchase of this cargo trailer not to exceed twenty-six thousand, including any applicable sales tax. Therefore, if you, you as a council would like to resolve this, we also request that, that you authorize the county administrator to execute the purchase agreement in this resolution.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Uh, yeah, for the existing state contract, was it necessary to go out for bids or just, could they have just clinched it with the existing?
They, from, they could have just gone directly to the state contract, but Chief Atwood said that he had some difficulty finding anyone on the state contract, and then he came upon this. So, he had already reached out to other, other companies for their quotations and estimates of price, and then he felt, was able to find this on the state procurement website.
Well, thank you. But, you know, just as I looked at some of the other proposals, it seemed like just getting a bare bones kind of cargo type trailer for an emergency operations center, it's going to have to be equipped and there'll have to be other things, other add-ons. And there was one company that had almost a complete package for that type of work, furnishings and whatever else, I'd have to go into an ELC. So, I was just curious as to whether or not it's more, it's more feasible to go with a higher price. I, you know, I just wanted to maybe get some of the comments from the sheriff and see what he?
I believe Chief Atwood is here or the sheriff's office is here, actually. He could, he could speak to that.
Yes, sir. In part of the world, Mr. Chicorelli, that'd be exactly what we would like to do is, however, the, the price is alw, you know, always inflated when you go. And what we've wanted to do, and what we wanted to be good stewards of, of the county's money and the citizens' money, so we want to buy something that was not so expensive.
Yeah.
And slowly fix it up as we can afford to do so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that price is just gonna keep escalating as you?
However, if the county would like to, if the council would like to help us purchase that, we, we would greatly appreciate that.
Okay.
But we're just trying to do what's best and with what budget we have.
Right.
And we found some money to be able to buy it, so we're just trying to go with the lowest price and try to do some of the work ourselves to save some of that money.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I see a very limited thing here, twenty, eight and a half by twenty-eight foot. Is this just a cargo trailer, two axles?
It, it is.
Door goes down the back?
That's right. It's a, it's a cargo trailer. It does come with the air conditioning unit, is that right? One, one air conditioning unit? So, it's limited. And to be honest with you, as much as we'd like to buy something that's fully furnished, we also would like to set it up, which is best for us. I know Hardyville Police Department, they have one, and we had a, a recent major incident, and they brought their command center. And it's nice, and it's set up for them. It wasn't working so well for us. Not that it's a bad thing, it's just we, we want to be able to manipulate and be able to set it up and structure it as, as best for us. Now, of course, if we had the money to do so, we could go to them and tell them what we wanted. But of course, I remember some of the bids are way, way up there. So, we're just trying to, like I said, spend as, as little as possible and, you know, we currently don't have anything. So, if we have a major incident, we're like, you know?
Someone, if, if it wasn't for the state contract, does that sound in line? I mean, and I'm just trying to figure out, is there something special about this trailer? Because we all know about what an eight and a half by twenty-eight is gonna run.
That, that was actually?
I purchased one two years ago. Made it a little longer. And I, and I do find a twenty-some thousand dollars might be?
A little high, a little high.
And I don't know if it's just because we're having to go through a state contract, and if that is the case, there are other local vendors that?
And, and we can certainly explore that. You know, and, you know, this? And, you know, this was the cheapest bid, I know we had some upwards of eighty thousand dollars, and of course, I know that's, you know how it can get out of hand quickly.
Is this a standard trailer?
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty much just a, it's a dual axle, twenty-eight, eight and a half.
Yeah, so.
So.
Oh, you do have, okay, okay.
So the state, the state also bids these.
That's the one that was, uh, twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, it's not a bear, it's.
Yeah, it's not completely bearish, it's just not.
What I was thinking.
Right, it's just not, yeah.
I can see that.
Just a stripped down, just wall-to-wall trailer, I understand, yeah. So it does, it is somewhat.
Yes.
Upfitted, just not to the fullest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Van Gezen.
No, that's pretty much, I get it.
Mr. Aral.
I just, you have this in your budget for?
Yes, I, that's one thing I do want to cover, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Aral. It's coming out of our capital outlays line item, but we have some money in there to buy it, but just to make you aware, you know, we've been examining things, going through our budget, trying to save some money. And one thing we recently did is, we had Power DMS, I say we, that the prior administration, with y'all's approval, purchased Power DMS, which cost the sheriff's office about twelve thousand dollars a year, that's a policy procedure type program. We began to do some research and realized that our ADP, which the county uses, will do the same function. So we canceled that, it saves us twelve thousand dollars a year. Instead of using Power DMS, we're now using ADP. And then we also have recently changed our cellphone plan through our sheriff's department to save us about six thousand dollars a year. So that, there enough to sell us eighteen thousand, we have some other things we're looking at. Just trying to turn the budget, save some money, and put it elsewhere so we can use it to the best of our ability.
Mr. Chicorelli, just one more question. Do you have any asset forfeiture money, like, do you, do you get that into your?
We do, yes, sir.
Is there any possibility of tapping into that for something like this?
Well, we can, we also have some other things we would like to do with that money too, some other, some other plans and things coming up, so we're just trying to, to spread it the best we can, but yet, there is some there that we can tap into, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thanks.
Everybody else, so I remember finish?
I'm done.
Okay, it seems like it'd be a wide, the selection you gave is a wide thing. Do you ever think, we used to have a Chevy van in the Department of Public Works, did you know that? An old one?
I didn't know that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I thought you'd tell me a story from your childhood, Mr. Kim, I'm sorry.
It's just a suggestion, you know, if it's still there, you should look at the fact that maybe if it's a blown engine or something that's cheap, you could use that. I've been at places, that used to be a very good command center for that. And I don't know if refurbish it, and they're very valuable from what I understand from my previous.
Well, and in major incidents, like the recent one we had a few weeks ago when officers got shot at, you know, we had almost a hundred police officers out there. And you have, it's complete chaos, we had multiple dog teams, two helicopters, multiple agencies, so we're just not in a place where that would be feasible for us anymore. Thank goodness we're growing to be bigger, but it's just, we had no, so it was over a hundred degrees heat index, and we had all these officers standing on the side of the road and swapping dog teams out every fifteen minutes, and it was just a mess, and we just, we saw the great need, which we, we know we needed one, but that kind of pushed it to the, to the forefront of being a more of a.
Only thing, only thing, I agree, I mean, it's, but it's just such a wide, it was such a wide, you had a truck there, I mean, it was a van there, and then you had this, and you had something else, that was just.
I remember the days of lifting just the back hatch of SUV, and that's what worked out of for a long, long time, or under a shade tree.
Okay, Mr.?
Last question, do you have something to pull it with?
Yes, sir, we do, yes, sir. We, we, throughout the years, when I was chair prior, we bought some pickup trucks and twenty-five hundreds, and we have some still on staff that we can use to pull that in our boats and et cetera. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'd like to, in this discussion, I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in, any comment? Hearing no comment, all those in favor say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
All against, hearing none, the motion has passed.
Counsel, thank you guys so much.
Ms. Burgess, again, consideration of resolution R-2025-51, find the normally, normal daily operations of the Jasper County Clerk of Court are affected by the necessity for the expedition, expedited installation and replacement of door locks and alarm system at the courthouse, and that the normal daily operations at the Levy Limehouse Community Center are affected by the necessity for the expedient installation and replacement of a fire alarm suppression system dissuading to, dissuading to Section 2-412 of the Jasper County Code of Ordinances, which allows for emergency procurement where normal daily operations are affecting, authorized in the county administrator or is designated to execute the necessary documents to obtain the services on behalf of the Jasper County and matters related to. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. What you read basically covers it largely, but to go into some of the details, the clerk of court has some, has some issues with installation and replacement of door locks and an alarm system at the courthouse, there to correct the life safety situation, and to further prevent closing of the building by the original fire marshal, as you may have been aware, on August eighth, I believe, the fire marshal came in and indicated that the particular issues that this resolution addresses were of such a severe nature that had, were they not fixed or repaired by the following Monday? His intent was to close the building. So that was, the lock system had already been approved, it was merely that I needed to bring it to you because it was greater than the, he put in a purchase order, we, we, Mr. Horton and I talked about that one. He decided, he said that he didn't want, really want to put it out for bid because it was so difficult to get on the locksmith's calendar, he was already on their calendar. So when we talked, I told him that I would bring it before you, which happened to be the same day after we'd already set the agenda for the eighteenth, July eighteenth meeting. So tonight was the first real opportunity that I could bring that particular issue to you. We approved the purchase order, and as far as I knew, that work was in the process, it was already on the calendar. The alarm system, I was unaware of that at the, at that meeting, but since then, during the week ending on the eighth, I did learn about the particular, that there was an issue with an alarm system, and that, that too was of sufficient, of the nature that it needed to be replaced. At the same time that we had the particular alarm issue with the courthouse, there's also an alarm issue with Levy Limehouse Community Center. That purchase was, or that procurement was handled some months ago, but the company, the alarm company that was originally contracted, was sold to another company, the whole process got delayed, and the way that I learned about that was, I got an invoice that said we need to pay a down payment. Then I began a process of, you know, this needs, there's a procurement process. So that's why this is coming to you as well, because we need to follow that procurement process, and again, that's, could be considered a life safety because it has to do with a fire alarm and the suppression system at the Levy Limehouse Community Center. So I'm bringing these items to you for your approval of the procurement as emergency procurement, because they are life safety issues, which bypasses us, for lack of a better word, bypasses the normal procurement process, because they are, they're not, most of them are not greater than the, well, the one lock and the fire alarm suppression system are greater than the ten thousand, they would normally have had to have been bid out, but they have extenuating circumstances to both of those. And I believe the alarm system has, is greater than the ten thousand also. So that's why I'm bringing them before you for your approval as emergency procurement. And I did want to make a correction in the page two, where the, under the now therefore be it resolved section, where we identify the amounts and the budget line items. I had erroneously put contractual services, which is what Mr. Horton had originally had those budgeted to. After further discussion, we determined that they could fall under building repairs under Department 83. So in the actual resolution that, should you pass this, will be signed tonight, that that correction on item one, where it says contractual services, 835095, and then the second bullet point, it too says contractual services, and that should say building repairs. Both of those would go to 835095, which is in the building maintenance department under building repairs. And then the third one would, for the fire alarm suppression system at the Levy Limehouse Community Center, should not exceed thirteen thousand dollars, and those funds would come from the park development line item 785040. So happy to answer any questions.
I have no question.
Gene?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No question.
Joe? Mr. Van Gezen?
I guess we gotta do this to be compliant, right?
Yes, sir.
And they were having a hard time getting bids, is that the issue? It just needs to be done now?
Um, there wasn't, I don't, to be honest, I don't think there was, there was no attempt to get bids.
Right.
With the exception of the locks, I was unaware that any of these items were in any sort of process until, as I mentioned, I got the, an invoice for a down payment from the Levy Limehouse Community Center. And then in several emails going back and forth, the week of the fourth, culminating in the visit by the fire marshal on the eighth, that's when I learned of the alarm system. So we're working to, we're working to educate everyone on the process. I hand out the purchasing ordinance and, you know, the purchasing ordinance to everyone as a new employee, as a newly elected official. We just need to be a little, send out reminders periodically that this is the process, which we have that implant, we have that in, working on a decision tree that will help this process.
I'm gonna ask you a question, you probably can't answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Whose responsibility is it to make sure our public buildings are up to code? Is there somebody?
I can't, you're, you're right, I can't.
Goes through and inspects our buildings to make sure they're safe for the public?
I can say, Mr. Iwaniki is the, is the man that's now in charge of that. He's inherited a lot of older structures and a lot of work that needs to be done, but with regard to the courthouse, that is clearly the clerk of court's authority, in their space, so they are now working with Mr. Iwaniki, I'm sure.
Okay, I, I was just curious, whose responsibility, if we had a?
Well, two of these are courthouse related, and I just want to make it clear, that's the clerk of court's purview and not ours.
Okay, thank you.
The vendors at the courthouse are vendors that installed the original locks and the original system, so it makes sense.
Okay.
To have those vendors address the situation.
Yeah, thank you for saying, that makes a lot of sense.
Currently there.
Appreciate it, Jim, thank you.
Mr. Aral. Can I ask you a question?
Nope, but I'm, my, I'm good, I got my answer.
Okay. Mr. Aral. What?
You've asked us already.
I did, well, it's been a long, a long day. Question for you, suppression on?
Make your comment.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead with your question.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Ms. Burgess mentioned a couple items to change, the building repairs, but the account numbers stay the same.
Correct.
The, the first bullet has a not to exceed of ten thousand, though, and the quote is for ten thousand three hundred and twenty.
You're right, you're correct.
So you, you may want to just increase that to ten thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you.
I did not know Levy had a fire suppression system.
I confirmed that with Mr. Bostick, who was the person who sent the invoice over. He said it's over the stove, where they have a kitchen.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I thought, when you see that, it was just, it's the kitchen.
It's the kitchen.
Okay. Didn't know the kitchen was workable, to tell you the truth. But anyway, okay.
It might be after this.
This work hasn't been done, it's gonna be done, correct?
It's in the process.
They're all in various states, yes, of being done.
And we did it without any kind of approval beforehand?
Your procurement policy has a normal procedure for doing things, but in other situations that come up, that are life safety, or a sole source, or all those things, you can make exceptions to that, so this still is compliant if you adopt, the resolution is compliant with our procurement policy. I just wanted to remind you that if you're inclined to consider adopting it, again, the first two bullets on page two, contractual services need to be listed as building repairs, and on the first bullet of the door locks, that dollar amount needs to be increased to ten thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
And what was the first bullet point?
First bullet point, the dollar amount needs to be increased.
The three, ten thousand three hundred.
Ten thousand three hundred and twenty.
Twenty, well, there was a other one before that, first bullet point.
On bullets one and two, the term contractual services needs to be stricken and replaced with building repairs is the correct lineup.
We've done all discussion, do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval for resolution 2025-51 with the items being changed to building repairs, as noted in the discussion, as well as the dollar amount changed to ten thousand three hundred and twenty in the discussion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gene, you're the second, just to make your first official. We'll make it first official.
Okay, Chris.
Okay, we'll get your name in the log. Anyway, do I have any comment? Hearing no comment, all those in favor say aye and raise their right hand. Aye. All against, hearing none, the motion has passed. Okay. Discussion, and I think the people there are gonna be Taylor Boinkin, correct? Other than those people?
Yeah.
Consideration of resolution R-2025-52, committing to negotiated a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, agreement between Jasper County and CCB CC Operations, LLC, identifying the project and other matters related thereto. Ms. Boink, Mr. Boink.
Good afternoon, I hope everybody's doing well. I come bearing good news for the county. This resolution and first reading allows for the negotiation of a fee in lieu of property taxes with Coca-Cola bottling. The first reading entails a fifteen-year fee in lieu of property tax agreement. Within this fee law agreement, Coca-Cola will commit to investing seven point four million dollars over two years. They are expected to finish their investment early, completing their nineteen thousand square foot expansion by the end of this year. Coca-Cola has been a part of the community since 2017, first investing five point four million in capital investment and committing to ten jobs. Over the years, they have surpassed their commitments substantially, now employing seventy-four full-time individuals within the county. And this expansion allows them to strengthen their operation in Jasper County to ensure their continued success. So we ask for permission to proceed with the negotiation of the fee in lieu of ad valorem tax, and Jack Casey with the company also joins us. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions, and he is available to answer any questions with the company.
Mr. Casey, would like to speak? You don't have to, just wanna give you the opportunity for being a good.
Thank you, just want to say, uh, consideration for this.
Thank you. Mr. Cicirelli?
So this is a consideration for it, is it a done deal, once we vote on it?
Mr. Chairman, this is a consideration to negotiate, so it's what we call an inducement reg-
so it's what we call an inducement resolution, that is committing you to, in good faith, agree to negotiate the terms of the fee.
Okay, and that would be a fifteen-year?
Yes, sir, yeah, the fifteen-year fee in lieu of tax agreement, yes, sir.
Okay, um, does twenty-four, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, is number twenty-four related to this resolution as well?
Mr. Boink?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so I, for respect of everyone's time, I went ahead and included it while I was up here, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, that would have to be voted on as well.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Mr. Arzillo?
Good.
Mr. Van Geesten? I'm good. Mr. Rowl?
Uh, the one question I had, Mr. Ciccarelli answered or asked for me, so I'm good.
I'm good. Uh, is there a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
I'll make a motion to approve R dash two oh two-five dash five-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any comment? My comment is, thank you very much for your investing in Jasper County. Uh, all those in favor, raise their right hand and say thank, uh.
Thank you.
To amend.
Thank you.
Or approve. All those in favor say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
Bye. All those against, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
We are thanking you, by the way.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, gentlemen.
Okay. Brittany Ward, I don't see her.
I don't see her either, but I would just like to point out, I scheduled a public hearing for tonight, so if we could at least just have that.
Right. We will have a public hearing. Uh, no one has signed up for the public hearing. Does anybody like to talk about the penalties of authorization of enforcement code, the new enforcement code, anybody talk about it? Hearing none, going once, twice, public hearing has closed. I'd like to have a motion to, uh...
Reschedule?
Reschedule at a later date, based on contact with Ms. Ward.
Make a motion?
Under discussion, may I ask of someone?
Yes.
Um, even though she's not here, I know we, well, Mr. Ciccarelli has not, so...
It's what?
Well, I just wanna know, even though she's not here, could we go ahead and take it up? We've all discussed it, but then I realized we haven't all discussed it, so, thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, reschedule?
I'll make a motion to reschedule, do we have a date certain on that, or just...
No, it would be coordination.
Coordination with staff?
With staff.
Okay, I make a motion to reschedule in coordination with staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor, raise their right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion has passed. Public hearing, Ms. Wagner, public hearing in consideration of second reading of ordinance O dash two oh two-five dash two-one to amend Article nine sixteen accessory structures from Jasper County zoning ordinance to allow increased building sizes for accessory structures in the residential, rural preservation, and resource conservation zoning districts. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening, Chairman and Councilmembers. Article nine-six of the Jasper County zoning ordinance regulates accessory structures, which are defined as any structure over a hundred and twenty square feet that supports an approved accessory use. Currently, the ordinance has a size limitation for accessory buildings in the residential, rural preservation, and resource conservation zoning districts. Although the planning commission recommended allowing additional square footage for accessory structures depending on the lot size, the county council determined at the July eighth, twenty-twenty-five workshop, that there should not be any size limitations on accessory structures in the residential, rural preservation, and resource conservation zoning district. Um, the proposed ordinance, before you denied it, would amend Articles nine-six-one, nine-six-two, and nine-six-four of the Jasper County zoning ordinance to remove all building size limitations. Article nine-six-one in general standards, um, number six and number seven has been stricken, as both of those refer to square footage limitations that apply. Under nine-six-two, um, number five has been stricken through to remind, to, um, remove all, um, size limitations based on acreage in the residential zoning district. Nine-six-four, um, accessory structures and resource conservation and rural preservation zoning districts, number one, has been stricken to, through to, um, remove the size limitation in those two zoning districts. Um, while the planning commission and planning staff respects the decision of the county council, I would like to just point out that under nine-six-point-two and nine-six-point-four, um, in the ordinance itself, it lists what are accessory structures, and halfway through, it just points out that appropriate regulation is required in order to ensure compatibility of land uses, protect privacy of neighbors, ensure minimum open space and area requirements, and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community. Um, Jasper County is the fastest-growing county in the state, and the third-fastest-growing county in the United States. Um, planning commission did review this at their, um, meeting in August, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, planning commission, and they just basically wanted to go on record to say that, you know, if, um, that if you pass this, they just think maybe some other safeguards should be in place, just such as limiting the size of the accessory structures, at least in a residential zoning district, and adding stormwater requirements for any structures over five thousand square feet.
Mr. Gene?
Yeah, just so I understand it correctly now, it's, are we wiping out all the limitations on, on the sizes?
Yes, that's what we were instructed to do.
And was the planning commission just basically saying that it should have some kind of infrastructure to it, or water?
Yes, we feel there should be restrictions. So the current ordinance does restrict it, and the restriction was pretty limited, it was eight hundred square feet. So we developed an ordinance to allow some additional square footage.
Mm-hmm.
So, um...
Yeah.
So that didn't quite go through, you know, and, um, and I think it, um, by majority, I do believe it's their decision that we don't have any limitations.
All right, I just have concerns with that, it just seems like it can get out of control if you don't have it, uh, on it, but I guess...
Yeah, we're concerned too, I mean, we, we respect that the county council are the decision-makers, but again, we just more or less wanna be on record, 'cause we look at it from a, a land use and a planning perspective, and I think I've read some of what our ordinance states. Um, any definition that you look up for accessory structure, it tells you it's a subordinate use to the principal structure. It should be smaller, it should serve as an incidental use to a primary structure.
Yeah.
And we think it's more appropriate in residential than anywhere.
Unless it's a barn, or a riding arena, or something like that, I mean, if, you know what I'm saying? I mean, there's...
Right. And so what we presented to you last time did have restrictions, I meant, it had exceptions for a bona fide agricultural structure in the rural preservation zoning district, which is agricultural type of zoning district, twenty-five acres and greater. There are many properties now that are under twenty-five acres that are zoned, um, rural preservation, but when we did the county-wide rezoning in two thousand and seven, everything that was twenty-five acres and greater was zoned rural preservation.
I do wanna make a thing too, 'cause I think Joey was, was with me on this. You know, I'm not for just being able to build the whole, you know, rooftop over the whole twenty acres or ten acres. I just wanted it to be more, you know, open than it was, and... So I mean, I think there's room for me, anyway, to make some adjustment, you know, and again, you know, it has to do with setbacks, right? How far you wanna be from the property lines and stuff like that, which is, which we need to have. But, um, I was just a little taken back by the, by the numbers, just because I do live rural, and we do have a lot of rural outbuild, we got a lot of buildings, structures, you know, um, and believe it or not, they're all full, I could use more. So I don't know where we get from here to there, how we come to happy medium, but... I mean, I'm glad we're having this conversation, and, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for jumping in, I just...
Well, you're next, you're next, so...
Well, I appreciate it, so, and, so that's, I mean, I think there's a happy medium we can come to, I don't think it has to be, like, wide open, I don't think that's what I meant, anyway. Um, and I'll let Joey speak for himself, but, you know, and I wasn't thinking in, in, uh, residential areas either, you know? That's, that's, to me, it's a little different thing when it's residential areas, or like where I live in the country, where we have a lot of room to move around and do things, so... I just think there needs to be some more definition to define exactly what we're talking about, and I'd, I'd be happy to, to look at that and, and, and talk about it. And I'll, I'll defer to, uh, to Joey, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Chairman, and get his thoughts on this also.
Mr. Arzillo?
Yeah, I think how we got from here, I wanted to say, as you said, on the record, two thousand and eight, there were no restrictions. In this ordinance with eight hundred and fifty square footage, um, I think when we discussed it, I'd mentioned that there's a sweet spot. And so I'm not necessarily, I'm kinda like Chris and, pardon Mr. Ciccarelli, that there has to be something, because if there's nothing, it's easy to say, bad people and bad decision, but eight hundred and fifty square foot is not a sweet spot for me, might be for some people. But when I said that, there was, I, I think the words were, the planning commission would not agree to that. And I didn't know exactly what that meant, here we are. What I don't wanna see is too much discussion on it while we have people trying to get something done there, and, and then it could kill their ability to do that. Um, and you know I was concerned about this a long time ago. So I'm, I'm looking at what the sweet spot is, and I'd like to know if we could figure that out right here while we're at it, so we can move on and get this over.
Sure, because what we brought back to you was bigger than eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, but it's twelve hundred square foot, and that's, that's not a sweet spot for me.
In residential, I think.
I understand, most people live in residential areas, right? In Jasper County, I mean...
Well, we do have a lot of properties that are rural preservation, especially in, like, the larger properties in Jasper County.
A lot of people would get caught up in that.
Yep. Well, we're happy to, anything that you suggest.
In, in discussion, you know, we were, the concerns were always told to me that we don't want people going in there and doing something that they shouldn't do. But then I say to you, they could do the same thing in an eight hundred fifty square foot house, or outbuilding. So that argument doesn't work, and if we could get to that point real quick, we'd probably wrap this up for me, at least. Um, anybody wanna put a number on this?
Mr. Rowl?
I'm still firm with the unlimited, because, I mean, there, obviously, like, whenever we had a workshop, there are certain things, we have to go with the setbacks, we have to look at certain things, that those criterias are still there. But at the end of the day, in rural Americana, if I wanna build a ten thousand square foot garage, why can't I? I can understand if you're in a residential neighborhood, I can understand if you're in an HOA neighborhood, or something along those lines, but if I wanna build something, and build it to the prevailing building codes, that's the way it should be, those are the trade-offs in the rural areas whenever you, you live there. So in my opinion, I'll go on the record and say, I think it needs to be unlimited, but also, we need to make sure that we go with those setbacks and look at, uh, some of those things like discussed in the workshop. I think putting a size number on something, um, and I know after the meeting, there was some folks reached out to me, and their concerns was, what happens if this, this, and this, and just like I said in the other meetings, that's what we have our building department for, that's what we have our code enforcement department for. If someone is gonna do something wrong, they're gonna do it wrong in a ten-by-ten or a hundred-by-hundred, it doesn't make a difference. So again, some of the other counties that are larger than us have unlimited. I would say, uh, we stick with the unlimited as well, the way it used to be before we adopted this. That's just my two cents.
I guess I'm the last one standing?
Yes.
Uh, I think part of the problem is residential versus rural. What is residential, what is rural? Uh, you know, I don't know about the eight hundred, I'm not aware of it, 'cause I haven't lived here and been in rural and been... But there's gotta be some kind of limitation, it's just, and I think I've talked to Mr. Rowl about this, it's like, if you build a building, or if you build something, and the water, you caught, the water that's there goes into another lot, right? That's a problem. It's the same thing if you put a building there, it affects somebody else's property. Uh, it may not be water, it may not be physical, but when you go to sell it, and that person should be there. Now, we could do that, and then there's a process that I've had at other, where it came from, that if you wanted to, larger than that, you got a petition, and the neighbors got involved. I don't know, in a rural area, when you have ten, fifteen acres, that's, I understand that. You know, it's a rural area, but when you get into residential, you know, and we're getting more and more residential, uh, on stuff, that, what used to be rural, now it's residential. So I really don't know, but I don't like the unlimited and, uh, stuff like that. That's something that has to be worked out between us, and, yes.
So I will tell you, me and the chairman had a pretty good discussion on this. I said, if I wanna paint my building camouflage, if I live in the, in the, in the back area, I should be able to do so. Um, unless you live in an HOA community or something that governs that, that is, again, part of rural Americana, so, um, I do understand stormwater, and there, there are some facets of that, um, that we would, we could definitely look into, but like I said, if I wanna build a ten thousand square foot garage, I should be entitled to do so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the good news is you're all right, okay? You have great points of view, and I appreciate, uh, the back and forth, but it seems to me that maybe the distinction is not necessarily zoning, rural preservation, or residential, it's more acre size that you're thinking, um, so...
Right, that's essentially what it is, if you have ten acres, a, a building can handle more, if you have a small lot.
It's almost as though if you have the larger tracts, you have, you've sort of zoned yourself, right? And, uh, or zoned yourself from your neighbors, so... I would suggest, we're probably not gonna resolve this here tonight, but if you allow us to come back and take a few more stabs at it from a different, a couple of different angles, we'd be happy to do that. But you do have it on for a public hearing, so, uh, if you would consider having a public hearing, we'll bring you back some suggestions.
The problem I have with that, and I'm speaking out here, and I'm with the chair of the vice...
I'm sorry.
Um, the problem is, again, I've been trying to push this forward, and for obvious reasons, we have several people, more than y'all have heard from, and, and, and they're just held in limbo on something that we should be able to handle. Um, we've been, you know, I guess that a bigger part of this discussion is, where the people who wanna do something versus the other side of it, where does that, where's the middle there, you know? 'Cause it's always gonna be a problem, there's always gonna be people saying, I can do anything I want, and then there's gonna be people saying, we're, we're gonna put on stormwater, this procedure, stormwater can, can really kill a project.
Well, let me just clarify, um, in commercial, there are, there is no, um, size limitation for an accessory building in commercial, but it also goes through a site plan in commercial. And, um, anything, our stormwater ordinance kicks in with five thousand square feet of impervious surface. If you're building a ten thousand square foot building that's not being looked at, that can cause some real drainage issues. that can cause some real drainage issues downstream or upstream, and it really shouldn't look bad.
Sure, but you want to consider.
We just said over five thousand square feet, though.
I know, but just, just going back to a bigger thing here, when we make decisions like impervious and all this, you got to understand that sometimes just hiring an engineer is ten thousand dollars. And then, and to get to just that standard that gets voted on so easy here, can add a hundred thousand dollars to a job, and you say, eh, trust me, you have no idea where it goes. And so, I'm looking at some things from the other side, that, that may not be seen downstream, but other people that feel it, that try to do something under this climate, because like I said, eight hundred, I don't know how we got to eight hundred fifty square foot. Now, I was offended that somehow somebody would tell me I could only have eight hundred fifty square foot.
Oh, we're trying to fix it.
I know, but you, when you go to twelve hundred, it, that's what's got us debating it now, because we could have fixed it, you see? And when I, when, when the suggestion was, let's talk about it, you know, and I, I want to keep it moving forward, and, and really, the only way to get this moved forward is for me to follow what Joey's saying, and go with what you just said, which doesn't sound perfect, but it gets us moving, so that people can get to, get to living their life and, and doing the things. Because like I said, you might not see it downstream, but I hear it, and I feel it. I've been here complaining about it, and I just wish that we didn't have to do something drastic to get this thing rolling for people.
Mr. Orzillo, may I ask, what are the sizes that you're hearing? What are people wanting in the way of size?
That goes against, that goes against what Joey just said, and I'm, I'm kind of thinking a little bit further ahead here, nobody else brought another number.
Okay.
And, and there again, we'll have to figure out where it is our right, and we have a right, maybe, but I want to make it clear that two thousand and eight, the world didn't fall apart, you know? We didn't have a restriction. Your setbacks dictate a lot of things, as Joey said, a lot of things come into play here. I, I, I just want to see this resolved as quickly as possible, I know what you need. You need something a little different, but sweetening the pot with fifty square foot or a hundred square foot, that, that's not getting there for me, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
All right, so, we've set precedents in the past by reading second, because we got a third reading right around the corner. I think we should go as written, the way we have it tonight, and between now and our third reading, if you could get us some potential things that we may consider, because at the end of the day, those are just our considerations as, as it goes with this. So, again, I'm for unlimited, I'm, I'm working with the setbacks, I can get that, but, again, with what Councilman Orzillo is saying, with the, with storm, certain stormwater situations, he is, he's correct, and it becomes cost prohibitive for residential to do so. If you want to build a open-air barn, or something along those lines, it may not fall into those, but I say we move forward with second reading in our public, is it a public hearing tonight as well?
Yeah, public.
Public hearing in our second reading.
I haven't even started that yet, you know, got ahead of the game.
Yeah, it's been advertised.
It's been advertised, but no one has signed up for it, but has anybody cared to talk about this? Hearing none, really.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, go on, come on up, use your name. Name and where you're from.
So, most of y'all know I'm Chad Scott, I live out in Levy, South Carolina, and so, this has been a, a big thorn in my side since, since I started my project, that my builder is sitting on my money right now, waiting on me to get a permit. So, I'm going to stand strong with you guys on the, the pre-two thousand and eight, no, no restrictions on the size limits of the building, just because, you know, I, I think it's bound a lot of people, and it's caused a lot of people to, to go and just build, because the county wouldn't help them get there. And, yes, people are just building without permits and whatnot, I'm trying to do the right thing, you know? I'm trying to be one of those people that's going to pay the taxes, and going to pay the, you know, the fees and whatnot, to help the county go forward. But, you know, if, if we're going to limit this stuff to, you know, eight hundred and fifty square feet, or whatever the number is, you're going to have people go do what they want to do, okay? It's just the way it is. Country people do what country people do, and they ain't going to have somebody else tell them what to do. It's, it's just like that. So, it would be beneficial for the county to go ahead and move forward this, just like it is, in my opinion.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. So, that's the end of the public hearing? Anybody else? Okay, end of the public hearing. Oh, I hate this one. Do I have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Make a motion to approval for consideration of second reading.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
All against? Motion has passed. Public hearing and discussion, uh, public hearing and second reading of, consideration of the second reading of ordinance O dash, O two oh two five dash two two, to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as to transfer two properties located along Speedway Boulevard and Piersburg Road bearing Jasper County tax numbers O three nine oh 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 one oh four oh and O three nine oh 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 one oh four one from the Community Commercial and Residential Zoning District to the Community Commercial Zoning District of Jasper County Official Zoning Map. Ms. Wagner.
This is a zoning map amendment request, I have two properties designated as community commercial, the subject properties consist of four point nine oh acres and four acres. They're both located along Speedway Boulevard, they're both currently split zoned, residential and community commercial, both properties are vacant and undeveloped. The applicant would like to rezone the properties to allow the properties to be used as commercial, although a specific use has not been identified. According to the two thousand and eighteen Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience new development or redevelopment, considerations should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zoned community commercial, residential, and rural preservation. The four acre property identified by tax map number zero three nine zero 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 one zero four one is adjacent to the city of Hardyville. This portion of Speedway Boulevard is located within the Gateway Corridor Overlay District. Adjacent land uses are commercial development, a church, and a former Penntail Golf Course. The properties are accessed by Speedway Boulevard, and they also have frontage along Piersburg Road. Speedway Boulevard is a four-lane state-maintained road classified as a major thoroughfare. Piersburg Road is both paved and dirt, and is maintained by South Carolina DOT, which is a limited local road. The applicant in the beginning was, it was suggested that he talk to Hardyville about annexation. Hardyville is aware of this application. I don't think there's been much discussion, for whatever reason, but I've made sure that they're aware of this application, so.
I'm going to open up the public meeting first, before we have discussion.
Yeah, it's been scheduled for a public hearing, and the planning commission does recommend approval.
Does anybody would like to have a public hearing on this, talk about it? Seeing none, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion, Mr. Ben Geesem.
I have no discussion.
Mr. Orzillo.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chikarelli.
Yeah, just a question about, they don't have to, they don't have to give a reason why they want this zoning, is that within their right to do that?
So, um, it's, and I don't know if y'all had the maps, I could pull one up, I didn't load it yet, but, um, but it's, the property is split zone because along, so Speedway Boulevard is Highway seventeen, and when the zoning was first set up, they created a commercial corridor. They didn't want, if it, if that property was more than three hundred and fifty feet deep, they didn't want the whole property to be zoned commercial. Again, it is, has this frontage along Highway seventeen, half of the property is community commercial, the back half is residential. So, under the rezoning, they can give, tell you what they want to use it for, but really and truly, you should look at all the uses allowed in community commercial, because once this rezones to community commercial, they can do anything that's allowed in that zoning district. Now, staff would not support it, when we first got the application, it was for industrial development, and we said no, because that wasn't supported by the Comprehensive Plan. There was no industrial zoning in the county, on the official Jasper County zoning map. I think there was some in Hardyville, that's why we suggested they go talk to Hardyville. Then they came back with general commercial, and I told them, you know, unfortunately, staff's not going to recommend that either, because it's, the Comprehensive Plan says Jasper County wants to remain rural, we have some of these areas, but, but in the Gateway Corridor Overlay District, we worked with Hardyville to create those standards, and we have some additional land uses that are allowed in the gateway, but you have more restrictive reg, standards, the way it's going to be developed, so.
Okay.
Gene, let me just say something, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can say something here. This is surrounded by, kind of like, commercial?
Yes.
It lends itself, if you've seen the map that they had up when we did our first reading, you would see that, you know, it's really not residential, it should be.
Commercial.
Yeah, because all surrounded by commercial map.
Okay, yeah.
So, it wouldn't make sense for somebody to have something, you know, residential right in the middle of a, in an area that's, just to give you a little.
No, it's good, yeah.
Insight.
Appreciate it.
Here you go, right here.
So, um, I do believe that really the property's going to be per se, so they don't know what their use will be. But, they'll be able to do something within the community commercial, but again, in the Gateway Corridor Overlay District, there are some additional general commercial uses that would be allowed, and that's why we didn't want to support a more intense zoning.
Yeah, I know you said it, but some of these folks weren't here, that corridor, the standards were developed jointly with the city.
With the city of Hardyville.
So, that whether a property annexed or not.
We would have the same standards.
Uses would be cohesive, and they would start to look alike.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Orzillo. Are you finished, Mr. Ben Geesem?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Orzillo.
Yeah, so it's these two pieces outlined in yellow, uh, signs been posted on the property, letters have been sent out for the public hearing.
Mr. Ralph?
Are there questions?
Just another observation, this is part of exit three, isn't it? This is going to be exit three.
This is right.
Piersburg Road goes up to exit three. So, that's going to be a major highway, it's going to be a highway or a bit major road at one point, so. Anyway, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, zero two zero two five dash twenty-two, to amend the official zoning map Jasper, Jasper County, so as to transfer two properties located along Speedway Boulevard and Piersburg Road bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number Zero.
You taking my job away from me? Anyway, go on.
I'm good, that's it. I'll stop there, I'm sorry, I just kind of, I thought I had a better stop.
You got into it.
Yeah, well, I thought I had a better stopping part, point, and I just really liked to hear my voice, so I just kept going.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, raise their right hand.
Aye.
Aye. All against, hearing none, motion is passed. Oh, Lord. Lisa Wagner again, geez. Public hearing only, ordinance O dash two oh two five dash twenty-three, to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County, so as to transfer a property consisting of approximately two hundred and sixty-four point five three acres and bearing Jasper County Tax Number O five two oh 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 three dash oh one two, from rural preservation zone to resource extraction on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map. This is a public hearing only, and I have.
Yes, and notices were sent out, I would just like to say, the property was property, properly posted prior to the public hearing schedule, we received, um, nine opposition letters and a petition, I believe the council pretty much was copied on all of those emails. Since we've sent out the public hearing notice, we have not gotten any additional comments, but I will say, since the last council meeting, a community meeting was held with the applicant, who is here with us tonight, and I did see some other people from the community, but they're not here now. But, I wasn't able to attend the community meeting, but I do know he had had a meeting with the community at your suggestion. Yeah.
This is public hearing. Namor Polk Workhurst, Workhurst, and Steven Fager. Hearing none, is there anybody else would like to talk? If not, public hearing is closed. Number sixteen, public hearing and consideration of second reading of ordinance O dash two oh two five dash two four, to amend the Jasper County Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Article Three, naming and addressing of roads, Section One, Two, Three, definitions of one, road, and two, private roads, so as to correct definitions due to Scrivener errors contained in ordinance number O dash two oh two five dash twelve.
Just to make this real quick, I introduced it last time, but, um, at the council meet in June second, there was a, um, ordinance to amend the, um, addressing of roads and naming and addressing of roads ordinance. When, after it was approved, we, I discovered there had been a Scrivener's error, when we drafted that ordinance, we accidentally copied a older, from an older version, the definition of, um, a private road, the county road, and, um, and then part of the private road was just inadvertently amended. So, this ordinance will just correct that, so that, um, our ordinance is correct, and as it gets recorded into, um, of course, Register of Deeds, but the county code and all will be correct.
Uh, this will be a public hearing?
This is a public hearing, it's also been noticed, thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to, we're really getting short here, anybody else would like to talk? Public hearing, once, twice, public hearing is closed. Do we have a discussion, Mr. Ben Geesem?
No discussion.
Mr. Orzillo. Mr. Gene.
No.
Mr., don't even have to say your name anymore. I do not, uh, I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, zero dash two zero two five dash two four.
Thank you very much, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment, hearing none, all those in favor, raise their right hand and say aye. Aye, all against, hearing none, motion is passed. Six, seventeen has been taken off. Eighteen has been taken off. Nineteen, public hearing and consideration of the second reading of ordinance O dash O two oh two five dash two five, authorizing the execution and delivery of amended and restated fee and lieu of tax agreements by and between CP Hardyville LLC, CH, CPH, Parcel A Owner LLC, CPH, Parcel B Owner LLC, CPH, Parcel C Owner LLC, and Jasper County, South Carolina, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, where such property will be subject to certain payments. payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Project Clarius. Clarus, excuse me.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Andrew Hoag here on behalf of CP Hardyville. Uh, the purpose of our request here with this ordinance is to amend, breaking apart the existing fee agreement that CP Hardyville already has with the county, in order to break it into four separate agreements, in order to cover and support the, uh, the subdivided parcels on their original property, in order to make that property more marketable to their tenants, as well as address specific terms agreed to between the county and CP Hardyville's first tenant on this site. And that applies to a Parcel C, uh, which is part of their development. Um, I just want to point out to the council that this is just, uh, there's taking CP Hardyville's already existing agreement and just restructuring it into four separate agreements in order to, uh, support the sub-development of each of those parcels.
Mr. Jean?
What is this, what is the sub-development? What does that consist of?
So it's, it was originally, uh, in the fee agreement, covered one parcel, uh, and we provided a map with some renderings of it. But then it's now divided into, um, a, a number of other, uh, sub, sub-parcels, uh, Subparcel A, B, C, D, E, and F, as well as some common areas amongst them. And so, uh, the different fee agreements will cover each of those parcels.
Okay. And what are they being utilized for, each of those parcels?
Commercial development.
Just commercial, do we know?
This is, this is a part of, this Clarius Park Hardyville, which is in the Levy area of Hardyville. It's a master planned, commercial, industrial distribution park. They have one, uh, agreement that goes over that and up around the whole development. They are looking to break that agreement down, not changing any terms, but breaking it down for parcels in the reason of marketability for concerned tenants and potential leases.
All right, thanks. Mr. Bengezen? No, I'm good to go. Mr. Orzillo? Mr. Rau?
No questions.
I have no questions, so I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor, raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none? Motion is passed.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have a public hearing? It's getting late. Hearing none, there is no one here to have a public meeting, I don't think. So, anyway, uh, we have held it, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, do I have an amendment to approve, disapprove, or amend?
Make a motion to approve second reading after the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 No, I lost my place.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Thank you. Uh, consideration, Ms. Burgess, consideration or approval of Wooded's Denty Architects LLC change order in the amount of three thou-
Twenty, I meant.
Sorry. It's getting late.
Public hearing, consideration of second reading of ordinance two-oh-two-five-dash-two-six amending, amending the business license ordinances of the county of Jasper County to update the class schedule as required by Act one-nine, one-seven-six of two thousand twenty. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Um, this is a required ordinance that we have to, every other year, have to update the, um, what's called the, uh, Appendix B, the business license classes, and to adopt what the state has issued. So, this is, tonight, this is a second reading and a public hearing.
I'll have a public hearing. Hearing none? No one here? Uh, I close the public hearing. I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor, raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion has passed. Twenty-one, Ms. Burgess, consideration and approval of Woods Denty Architects LLC change order in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to provide professional services related to the architectural and engineering services for the preparation of construction documents for additional outlets for Pratt Memorial Library. Ms. Burgess.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, members, council. As you said, this is a request to approve a change order from Woods Denty Architects for the Pratt Memorial Library. Uh, one is for, actually, is one, the one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars is for the outlets, and then there's to design those, another is, um, another one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars to design a generator connection design. They requested that there be a small generator placed at the library to provide for internet services for other, other libraries in the region, because Jasper County is the, I guess, the hub for their internet services. Um, this request actually exceeds the ten percent, accumulated ten percent authorization that the county administrator has to approve such change orders. So, we are required to bring this before you tonight and ask that you approve this change order on behalf of, uh, for Woods Denty Architects on behalf of the Pratt Memorial Library. And the funds would still be currently coming from the, um, ARPA funds.
Ms. Orzillo? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Bengezen? Any questions?
Um, I mean, obviously, they're, they're adding outlets, right, to the library, um, and it's for the transfer source for the generator docking station. Um, I guess, is this where they're drawing in engineering?
Yes.
For that, okay.
For the design, yes, sir.
That's it, I, I guess I just wanted to read that out loud.
Mr. Jean?
Uh, what's the target date on the library to be opened?
The last I heard was December eleventh.
December eleventh?
Yes, sir.
Of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, great.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rau?
You said it was ARPA funds?
Yes.
No other questions?
I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
I'll make a motion to approve the Woods Denty Architect LLC change order.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor, raise their right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none? Motion is passed. Ms. Burgess, again, consideration of approval of the receipt of a grant from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety for the school fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four, eight hundred and forty-three dollars for the period seven-one, two thousand twenty-five, and six-thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Ms. Burgess.
Yes, sir, thank you. The, um, South Carolina Department of Public Safety has awarded Jasper County Sheriff's Office a grant in the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars for the school fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six School Resource Officer Program. Um, the award is to pay for the cost of law enforcement officers that shall serve as a full-time SRO assigned exclusively to one of the schools within the school district. And the schools to which this grant applies are Jasper County School District Kate, Jasper County School District Alternative Program, Jasper County School District Ridgeland Elementary, the South Carolina Public Charter Polaris Tech Charter School Elementary, and the South Carolina Public Charter Polaris Tech Charter School Middle and High School. Um, we would request that the county, uh, council approve the receipt of the South Carolina Department of Public Safety School Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six SRO grant in the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight forty-three, and authorize the sheriff, Christopher Malfris, Chief Deputy Michael Atwood, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Andrew Fulgham, and myself as the financial officer to execute the documents necessary to accept the grant award.
Mr. Bengezen? Um, no questions. Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Jean?
No question.
Mr. Rau?
No questions.
Hearing no questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
All against? Hearing motion, none? Motion passed. Mr. Fulgham?
Thank you.
Consideration and approval or request to name a public building and appointment of committee to evaluate the request and make a report and recommendation to council.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I hope you've had time to read, uh, my report. Uh, you received a nomination from Ms. Jacqueline Scott of Hardyville to, um, name the Levy Limehouse Bellinger Hill Community Center after former Representative Juanita White, who passed away in two thousand eleven. I've set out in the memo, uh, you do have procedures for doing this, and that requires, uh, the review and recommendation by a committee. Back to you, once you receive an application, typically the, it, it notes, uh, you're in your ordinance, that the clerk is to handle this, but I know that she hasn't had a opportunity to have this, uh, request before, so I thought I'd go ahead and do it, uh, for you. And so, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but ultimately, we're requesting that you consider appointing a committee to review the request and then provide a report back to you on its appropriateness.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Orzillo since his district, and he will come forth with a committee to bring before us the request. Is that proper?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
And also, would it be proper for me, we're having a meeting, town hall meeting tomorrow in that area, and would it be appropriate for me to make a selection of people putting forward to council approval?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And there are no rules associated with that committee? There's no size requirement? There's no residency requirement? There's no, it's, it's up to you.
Do I have to make a resolution, or just, that's it?
Um, I mean, I, you could, although this is an ad hoc committee, I think, I don't think it's necessary. I think by motion, you would appoint the committee and have them do their work and, and stipulate a timeline when they report back with a report to the full council. I think that'd be appropriate, Mr. Chairman. That's how it's been done in the past.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Uh, I'd like to have a motion to approve the signing, Mr. Orzillo, start a committee, the research committee, and bring it back to us. Do I have a-
I'll make a motion to approve Councilman Orzillo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise their right hand.
Aye.
All against? Number twenty-four, I, yes, it's Taylor again. Is he here? Okay.
He didn't run out.
He didn't run out. Last man standing.
Yeah.
Uh, consideration of the first reading of authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of taxes by and between Jasper County, South Carolina, and CCBCC Operations LLC to provide for payment of a, of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters.
Yep, so, previously discussed in Agenda Item Eleven, happy to rehash anything that you would like, or if anyone has any more additional questions?
Mr. Bengezen? I have no questions. Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Jean?
No question.
Mr. Rau?
No questions.
No questions here. Uh, all those in favor, say aye and raise their right hand. Uh, excuse me, I'd like to have a motion. I'd like to, trying to rush it. I'd like to have a motion to approve, disapprove, or amend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approval for consideration of first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any comment? Hearing no comment? All those in favor, raise their right hand and vote aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none? Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Finally, to administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll keep this brief, I had a couple items on your report. Ms. Burgess is passing out the latest and greatest spreadsheet for your meetings, which is already changed, uh, but you'll notice all the green or all the meetings that you have completed. The final meeting I have on there was proposed to be a workshop, which is this coming Monday, August the twenty-fifth. Um, Mr. Chairman, you want to reiterate that that will be a special meeting instead of a workshop?
Right.
And, uh, the agenda will be setting, uh, very shortly. So, I want to put that out publicly, we'll change that, but that's, uh, the meeting that's proposed on the twenty-fifth will not be a workshop, but will be a regular session.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When we fill this out completely in green, do we get to biggie-size it, or is there-
It just means there'll be a page two.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the I-95 widening project, I know some of you had the opportunity to participate in the ribbon, I'm sorry, groundbreaking of I-95, uh, big event for Jasper County and the city of Hardyville, I know. Uh, I wanted to relay to you that, uh, the other two segments, Segment Two, which is from mile marker nine to mile marker twenty-two, and Segment Three, which is from mile marker twenty-two to mile marker thirty-three-point-nine, uh, they are also in play now as far as moving forward with design work. And so, uh, the, um, consulting engineer for DOT and DOT have proposed having a, uh, sort of a drop-in for you to talk about Phase Two. They have some drawings and some ideas about the interchanges and, uh, realignments and so forth, and they're proposing to do that, Mr. Chairman, on the twenty-fifth, at two o'clock, here in this room. So, they will set up that information for you, and if you want to drop in and give them your comments, uh, that'd be great. Um, they are, we are doing that in conjunction with the town of Ridgeland. The city of Hardyville wanted to do that alone the same day, they're doing it earlier in the morning, but we are trying to structure it with the town as not a meeting of the county or the town, but simply, we'll notice something that you will likely and, uh, have a quorum at the meeting, or you will be present at the meeting, but you, there'll be no business that will be, uh, taking place at that meeting. So, I'll remind you again, but just reminder, twenty-fifth, you're going to have a meeting beginning at ten, and at two o'clock, in the same room here, uh, they're going to set up for, you know, a sort of drop-in to learn about the second phase of I-95 widening. You, you may remember that a month or so ago, I said they're going to have a formal public meeting about this on September the eleventh. And that's going to be at Lakeside at Blue Heron, but this is just for you on, uh, Monday.
What happens if we over, we have a meeting and it goes longer than we expected? No.
Suppose we have to find, have to find another room, I suppose.
If we do that.
Anyway, all right, um, we had Ms. Heather Rath here, and I was going to give you a quick, uh, update on the opioid litigation settlement. Uh, I still have a couple of settlements to opt in, there's a process for doing that, and I'm working on that. I would think I have, we have a September deadline to do that. But you may have seen in the numbers here, you have obligated, uh, funding sufficiently to keep you in compliance with the, with the state program. Uh, you have a risk of losing approximately, a little over fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it's not really a risk. Uh, she, Ms. Rath is going to be discussing with you, she hasn't already, about the use of that. I think she has a plan for that, to make application. We simply need to apply for it, uh, for, in the September timeframe, and then that will be obligated. So you will have obligated all of the settlement funds to date, which is great, and, uh, there'll be more coming in. And so we need to continue to think about how this plan evolves, you know, going forward. And then the, uh, final item about, uh, the proposed Ticton Hall development, you mentioned something about that. Uh, we have been working with Raftellus, the group, to try to prepare a proposal, it is taking quite some time, but I understand from Chief, uh, who's been working on this, that they had a particular principal or something that was out on vacation for extended time. That person's back, so we're supposed to receive something this week. So as soon as we receive that, what I propose to do, instead of bringing it back to you, is simply to ask the developer if they'd be willing to pay for that and, and move forward from there. So, that's my intent, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but I, I wanted to keep it brief because I know the lateness of the hour.
Anybody having questions? Nobody? Nobody?
Have they submitted anything yet, I mean, at Raftellus?
Who's, what do you mean?
Raftellus, did they submit any reports to, did you get anything from Raftellus yet, or?
No, sir.
On any?
As the administrator indicated, we're waiting on them to, to at least convey a proposal to us, and the administrator can reach back out to, I believe, the developer and request that they pay for that.
Okay, yeah, that, yeah, I kind of picked up on that, but there's been talk about, at other council, at the Ridgeland council meetings, that they were saying that they've had discussions with our fire services or with the county, is it, is it all like fictitious kind of stuff, or is it, is there any truth to these?
I think I can say I was probably at all those meetings, there have been discussions about it, but there has been no, um, council action, it hasn't been a council item, hasn't been anything like that.
Yeah.
And so, uh, what we have told them is we would handle it like any other subdivision or development, that we would have to have a professional proposal that would evaluate the costs of providing services, and we have chosen Raftellus to at least get a scope of work that meets our standards.
Right.
And then ask the developer to pay for that with no guarantees that you will consider it, be in favor of it, be opposed to it.
Okay.
That's where it stands.
I'll just jump on that real quick, um, I do know in some of our past meetings that we discussed this, um, I don't know if it's the whole pleasure of the council, but I really don't think that entering in those agreements right now is best interest right now, in my opinion, and that's just my opinion.
I'm happy to do whatever you want to do, we have lots of things to do here, but we thought that was probably the, the easiest thing to do and the least taxing on staff was to simply hand the proposal to the developer to see if they would be willing to pay it. Instead of going through the, we had talked about it, another way to do that was the county pay for it and then get reimbursed by the developer, so, uh, I think that's a little more cumbersome.
I would not, if the developer wants to pay for it, he pays for it, we don't touch it, that's mine. We're not gonna go through this, then they got rumors that they, Ridgeland says they didn't pay for the original, developer didn't pay for the original, uh, report, and I'm not gonna get involved with that, at least me, myself, it's just one person. If we, if, if Brad Calliden wants to go to the developer and let them do it and then give it to us, that's fine, but not, and not one dollar from us.
Mr. Chairman, that was my intention, was to just go through that process and just let you know that when that was done, and, but I'm happy to take any direction if it's any different.
Because I'll tell you, it's not, I don't think it's looked upon favorably about doing that, so anyway, I have that. So, what, are we putting it off? What are we doing?
It's, it's up to the developer if he wants to do the report or not.
No, I'm just saying, I agree with you.
Right.
The developer paying for that, I'm just saying, are we, when are we wanting to take this up sooner or later, right?
Oh, yes, sir, my frustration has been with actually getting the quote prepared, uh, and as soon as we have the quote, we can move on it, we just don't have it yet, but they have assured the chief they'll have it. As soon as we get it, we'll, we'll, we'll handle it at the staff level unless otherwise directed.
Just give it to them and say, this is the proposal, if you want to do it, here's the, yeah, here's the contact.
Yeah, put it in their, in their.
Put it in their wheelhouse.
Yes, sir, that, that, that's our plan.
But it's saying there's money if, if there was no interest here, I don't know who'd go by consensus if there's any interest. I hate going spend money if there's no interest here.
I have no interest, I'll take a poll, Mr. Vengizum, do you wanna entertain this with a report, or you want, just don't want to touch it?
I, I mean, I think they should have the right to get a report, if they want one, if they pay for it, I don't.
That's right, but, but I think we should tell them what our, our...
Expectations are.
Expectations are.
That's fine.
I mean, do we want to do it or not, do, you know, are we gonna consider taking over the fire? From them? And how much, I mean, the, the way, the way it was proposed to me...
In a development agreement somehow, but that's something we need to discuss.
Well, that's not us, that's, because it's, it's the town. What, what I'm saying is, the whole basis, at least when I was going to Ridgeland, they wanted to put us onto the cherry point at thirty-two mil, and that was it.
Yep.
And there wa, there was no more additional money. Well, now, if you go to the presentation we had, that's not gonna happen. So, they've got it, they've got to give us, somebody's got to give us the money if we're even gonna do it. This whole thing in the beginning is gonna really change how we look at things, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir, you, you as a council have not had that opportunity to, to, one, understand what it may cost you, and, two, uh, what your appetite is for moving forward, and so that's all we're trying to get you to. The only reason, the only reason we're involved in it is because we wanted to have control over the scope, we didn't want to tell the developer, produce a study, and then get a study that was less than what we thought was what we needed, that's why we're developing the scope, asking them to consider paying it, with the clear understanding to have, you all are not doing that with any obligation other than to re, review the results of the proposal.
I, to me personally, I'll take one, I, I, they can do whatever they want, but I would say no to it, even if it...
Even if we get to put the scope out there, I think that's a pretty, pretty, pretty good thing for us to have an opportunity to put a scope out there.
What scope? At what cost?
Well, that's what this company is gonna determine for us, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, I'm saying at what cost, period.
Yes.
You know, even, whatever it is, we're gonna be involved in something that, we're g, what they want us to do is take a fire, take the fire over, right? First of all, we have a hard enough time with this thing going on, where we're gonna take the different fires, how that's gonna work. That, that erases everything they've said before. Number two is, we're, we're not gonna get the benefit of anything except the full cost of increasing our fire, which is gonna increase the whole district, which is not fair.
I see both sides, I see, uh, find out what the numbers are before you say no, and I also see that if you're inclined not to entertain it at all, that, that doing the study doesn't make any sense, so.
Yeah, because I, could I say something, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I think Ridgeland is going to have their own vote on this coming up soon, I think their council is gonna vote on this, so it'll, a lot will depend on whether or not that vote gets affirmed or denied, so if it does get to us, though, I'm, I'm not even, you know, I, I have no appetite for it either, I, I like the rural preservation, and that's kind of my stance on that, I'm not looking to change it.
And I think their vote is gonna be based on what we do.
There's a cart and a horse in the same room competing for each other right now.
Well, I'll remind you all that I work at your pleasure, and I'm standing here, if you have some other direction for me, I'm, I'm happy to take it.
Well, may I ask, if you have a recommendation, or are you completely neutral on this?
I'm completely neutral. It, it's a policy decision, what you want to do, you have not been formally requested anything other than would you consider possibly providing fire service, and that's why we're doing this with the outside consultant.
Mr. Chairman, I am fully against that idea, and that's just for me, that's, we're not voting, maybe we are, that's my stance.
But you've already got three votes.
You already got three votes.
Boom, boom, and boom, so I would say that's your authorization to stand down.
Stand down on the proposal and asking the developer pay for it. Is that consensus, council?
Yeah, he shouldn't, we, we shouldn't put up any money, but if we still, if we don't even want him to go forward, should they even put a proposal to us? I mean, if we're not, if we have no appetite to even, or is it their legal right to, to be able to present us with a proposal, I don't know, if that's a, you know...
I don't think there's a legal right, I think that's through the town with their proposal.
Right, and all, all of that service discussion would be discretionary on your part, so it's your choice.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to do a proposal and we, we already got no appetite for it, I'm not sure if they even want to spend the money for that, but I'm just curious to what Ridgeland's gonna do this week, I think it's, their vote is coming up this week.
Actually, I think this is, if we say no, they're gonna say, have to say no, they're not gonna be able, unless, unless the developer spends his money and says, okay, I'll support that, I mean, he's already gonna put a fire department up there in twenty years, or ten years, whatever.
Again, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, what would you like me to do?
Stay, stand down. Uh, do you want me to have a vote on that?
I think you've already got your vote.
But as Andy said before, on something like this, I think it, he does need a, some sort of resolution at least.
Should he prescri, okay, the motion is, how did you put this motion together? Should...
I think it would be a motion to abort the effort to...
Should the motion, should the, okay, should the administrator abort the, uh, going further with this without telling the developer, we're not gonna do anything, it's up to him if he wants to do it, I'll tell it that way. But we have, we have no, he can try, as, I, I don't want, I don't want to restrict him, I, I, I really don't want to restrict him, but I don't want to have him go in saying, well, we maybe can. So, I don't want to have it say, you know, we're gonna give him a gloat, a, a little bit of hope type of thing.
Honestly and truly, that, I'm not exactly sure what you just said, but I think the, the best thing is either yea or nay.
Okay, yea or nay? Nay?
Nay.
Nay, Mr. Rowl.
I'm a nay.
Mr. Orzillo? Mr. Vengizum?
I'm a yea.
Okay. Four to one.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
That was a... Okay, councilman comments and discussion. Since you're the new man on this block, Mr. Jean.
Uh, yeah, so just, what was mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Fulgham had said that the widening project for I-95 was a, a really good ceremony for, with the governor there, and, uh, I think I want to nominate, uh, Vice Chair Ralph for doing the Cinderella Award, he saved somebody's sandal in about two feet of water, so the, the ground was, the ground was so saturated that some lady was walking toward a, a safe area, but it wasn't safe, she walked through the hay and her foot went right down in about two feet of water, and then luckily she didn't break her leg, but he's, he came to the rescue, he fell asleep, and he had, he had his arm full of like muck and everything else, so I gotta say he did a good job on the, on the Cinderella rescue, though. Uh, the other thing was the, we went to the park ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Sergeant Jasper County Park, um, was very well put together, they have this trail for kids and families, it's a new track that they opened up, and, um, yeah, so, Mr. Fulgham was there, Chairman Kemp, and a few county employees were also in attendance, Mayor Hardyville was there. Let's see, so, anyway, I was very impressed with Cory Bivins, he does a great job over there, he has good staff, um, they, they will, they have their act together, that, that group there, I'm very impressed with it, and, um, and if they're watching now, I just want to say that they did a great job, you know, just putting that all together, and what Chairman Kemp had said about the park, he gave a, a nice talk about it, but it is a hidden gem, uh, the place is really, I don't know, I was very impressed with it when I had seen it, and I hope to get back there, but it, the people don't take advantage of that park, it's, it's a shame because it really is a, a great asset for the, for the county, so I'm hoping that, uh, more people will, will utilize that park, and that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Vengizum?
Um, I just want to congratulate Jean and welcome him to the deus up here.
Thanks.
And, uh, I think he'll make a, a good fifth, um, and it's nice to have a full, full deus for once.
Thanks.
Mr. Orzillo?
Same thing, Jean, congratulations on finally seeing you.
Mr. Rowl?
Uh, again, I could have said the same thing, welcome Jean, welcome aboard, uh, just getting prepared for one of these.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, God, I do have a couple things, um, I was in attendance at where the groundbreaking for I-95, which is gonna be a good thing, but all, all will be troublesome with traffic, I think, in the future, just because of the nature of all the work there, so, um, we've got a lot, uh, moving ahead. Also, um, I have received a few concerns, and I don't know exactly what the ditches that the county owns, maybe, Jim, if y'all can kind of look in that, there's been some folks, I guess with some flooding or, uh, or questions about that, I don't know who owns what, and I don't know exactly where these ditches are, if they're state, private, or county, um, if I get any more, um, I'll reach out to you.
One of them's off of Swift, Swift Horse Lane, and we actually had some, uh, speed racing swimming down them last weekend, so...
So, it's, there, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of ditches, I think we've had some unprecedented rains in the last few weeks, so definitely getting over inundated, and then on top of that with a full moon tides in some of those other areas. The only other things I've got, Andy, where are we at with the audit on the airport and getting our other big audit kicked off?
I'm sorry?
The audit on the airport and the other audit that we're gonna get kicked off?
All done by the same group, and they are engaged currently?
The annual financial audit has been, we started that process July one.
You talking about the forensic?
But I think he's talking about the...
Like the airport audit?
The airport audit.
We did a, we did a, yeah, we, we asked for a, a more in-depth look at the airport operations as part of a side, uh, special audit, if you will, of the annual audit.
It's called agreed-upon procedures.
Agreed-upon procedures, and that has been authorized, I don't know the status of it yet, though.
They, Mr. Kemp signed a, um, a engagement letter about our last meeting, and they have now used that, um, probably twice, so listen today again, just to make sure.
I'm assuming that they...
They haven't sent any proceedings up yet.
Right, but the, the results of that will be presented with your regular annual audit, I'm assuming, yeah.
Okay.
And I think you were talking about the forensic audit that we had applied for, right?
Also with that, yeah.
That, when does that start?
I'm sorry?
Or forensic might have not been the, the terminology, but the, the bigger, all bigger...
We, we need to have a lot more discussion about that, about what the scope of that is first.
Okay.
That's a sort of a policy decision, we have to frame that out a little bit before we go forward with that. Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I know you're in your comments, but, um, I failed to mention our report, we do have some good news, Mr. Rowl triggered, uh, the talk with the ditches, but the brick grant that was a million dollar grant, or million dollar plus grant, uh, that was taken away from us, uh, it may still have some life in it, and if we would just let the chief, uh, report for just a minute on that process, I think that, that could be super helpful for us going forward.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as the administrator has indicated, uh, there were some discussions that Low Country Council of Governments, uh, had sustained through the process, and while we had received a Dear John letter from, uh, the state, was indicating that the feds had recalled the grant, uh, we have since received word that it may be revived, and that we would be able to proceed forward with that. The Chief Finance Officer, I believe, when that Dear John letter came about, that was prior to our fiscal year starting, so the, the twenty-five percent cost share on that was not funded, so that may be something that we'll have to circle back around on, um, but we are really truly driving forward on trying to get them to commit to, uh, the revitalization or reviving of that brick grant, um, in writing, um, we don't want to venture out to those commitments, those fiscal commitments, without something absolutely in writing indicating that they will cover seventy-five percent of that study.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind everyone, the council who may not have been here, that was a, a grant to, um, to conduct a county-wide stormwater management plan for us.
Uh, Mr. Chair? Can I just, I forgot to say one other thing. I just want to thank you, Chief, uh, also for the I-95 widening project, you were out there, you guys are out there and ladies, and, uh, it was good to see the Jasper County Emergency Services and Fire, uh, you know, represented at that, at that celeb, you know, celebration of, of, uh, you know, you had, you had a good show. celebration of, you know, you, you had a good showing, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, and, and Vice Chairman Ralph, again, indicates there may be some traffic challenges, and so the, the opportunity for us to be there and just see that process unfold was, was a tremendous opportunity for staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've had my say, so I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Is there any comment on that? Hearing, none. All those in favor raise their right hand and get up.
Get up and go.